It is seven o'clock. I'd like to call the October 13th Town Council meeting. As usually we begin the press release.
Brian. I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being justice for all.
Before we start, I just want to make notes, everyone out there, we are wearing our masks. You will remove, once we remember, our masks when we're speaking. And just a reminder, not only are we looking at COVID starting to heat up a little bit throughout the state, but we're beginning to get into flu season. So please, keep washing your hands, keep socially distant, and wear your mask when you're in your violation. With that, we are starting with a presentation and recognition. This recognition is for Jim Foote on his long tenure on the Water Pollution Control Authority, and I believe Jim is with us remotely. I will start off. I was the Town Council Liaison on the WDCM, my first tenure on the council. I've learned many things from Jim, like what fog is, that's fat, oil, and grease, never put them in the drain. A toilet is not to be used as a garbage can. Do not flush anything down there that cannot go down usually. And also, groundwater flows downhill. Very important to keep in mind when you're trying to connect new people to the sewer system. With that, I will read the proclamation for Jim. Whereas, the Water Pollution Control Authority's mission is to provide regional wastewater treatment services which enhance environmentally sound community development and ensure public health through improved water quality. And whereas, the Water Pollution Control Authority oversees 200 miles of sewer collection systems and 17 pump stations. And whereas, the water pollution, uh, excuse me, whereas Jim Foote has served on the Farmington Water Pollution Control Authority as a member since 1995. And whereas, Jim Foote serves as Chair of the Water Pollution Control Authority from 1995 to 2018, and is currently serving as Vice Chair. And whereas, Jim Foote has served on the Sewer Subcommittee, whose work included updating the town of Farmington sewer ordinance and completing a cost benefit analysis to ensure Farmington utilizes best practices in sewer assessment. And whereas, Jim W. Foote, throughout his 25-year tenure, has also overseen many pivotal infrastructure projects in the town of Farmington, most notably, the update of the Water Pollution Control Facility in 2019, which was completed on time and on budget. And whereas, the new Water Pollution Control Facility was the largest capital project in town history at a cost of $57 million. And whereas, upgrading the facility has many benefits, which include increased treatment capacity, superior energy efficiency, added reliability and redundancy, nitrogen and phosphorus removal, odor control improvements, elimination of chemicals used for disinfection, and current code and safety standards compliance. And whereas, as a result of Jim Foote's effort with the upgrade of the facility, the Water Pollution Control Facility is expected to meet the needs of our community for the next 25 years. Now, therefore, the town of Farmington hereby commends Jim Foote for his excellent work on behalf of the community, and we hereby thank him for his 25 years of selfless dedication and immeasurable contributions and commitment to the town of Farmington and its residents, and hope that he will continue to be involved in the Water Pollution Control Authority for years to come. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, the 13th of October, 2020, CJ Thomas, Chair, Farmington Town Council. Thank you. Jim, are you out there? If you'd like to say any words, we'll have to hear from you.
Just unmuting him.
You're being unmuted now. Okay, I guess not. Jim, thank you very much, and I believe Peter Bagaidian is on the line, is that correct also, from the WPCA? He served many of those years with Jim as well. So, thank you and congratulations, Jim. And a little later on, we'll hear his name once more. When we're not letting him get away quite yet, we're reappointing him to the WPCA. With that, item G, public hearing.
I think Paul will read a legal notice. A public hearing will be held on October 13th, 2020, at 7:05 p.m. online via Zoom webinar to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 51 pension law. Comments can be sent to the Town Council until 12 noon on October 13th, 2020, and are accepted via email to publiccomments@farmington-dc.org, or by calling 860-673-8282 and leaving a voicemail. Please provide your name and address with emailing or calling in for public comments. Calling comments are limited to five minutes. Please call the Town Manager's Office at 860-675-2350 with any questions. Dated Farmington, Connecticut, 28th day of September, 2020, Kathy D. Long, Town Manager.
All right. We had some technical difficulty, the TVs are not working, so we'll just use paper. But very simply, this is a very easy change to Chapter 51, our pension ordinance. It is applied to the nurses that, the Board of Education employees, there are eight nurses in this group. The town of Farmington is the responsible party to negotiate the benefits of this group, not the Board of Eds, a little bit interesting. But we did this two years ago now with the unaffiliated, where the unclassified staff, the custodians, the secretaries, the paras, we did this in 2018 with them. This is, like I said, a small group, there's about one nurse per school with a floater. Simply put, this pension change just closes the pension design benefit plan, which is outlined in Chapter 51, as of July 1, 2020, to new employees. They will go on to a defined contribution plan, which we have been working at the town since 2011 to move employees off of. They have the same benefits as all other employees that are on the defined contribution plan, with a 6%, 5% match from the town. And that is across the board with all our units that are in the DC plan. Really, why do we do this? Just to attempt to, again, to continue to control the level of contribution that we make to the defined pension plan. Eventually, this plan will die in actual death. It will take many, many, many years to do that, but eventually, all people will be on the DC plan, and the DC plan could close, I don't know, within the next century, I guess. But really, it brings the nursing employees in line with all the rest of the employee benefits in town. And, you know, like I said, it completes our transition. There are only two very small changes to the pension ordinance. There is one area where we add the word nursing employees, where it already speaks to the secretarial employees in the Board of Eds, we add the term nurses to clarify. And that, it simply says that as of July 1, 2020, new employees, the plan is closed to them. So, we, as you recall last meeting, approved that contract, that piece of that contract. We have a public hearing today, and then in 30 days, that pension change goes into effect. We have had some questions from other retirees. There is absolutely no change to anyone's benefits, anybody that's retired already. This is for nursing employees in the Board of Eds only, and it's for employees going forward after this, in this public hearing. Any questions?
I think you usually ask the questions after the public.
Do we have any public comments on this, on this public hearing?
I think we have.
Seeing none? We have agenda items for this, but.
We have agenda items for later on.
Okay. We need new items.
Closing the hearing at 7:08.
Now we will go to general public comments. Do we have any public comments at all from the general public? If you do, please state your name. You'll be limited to five minutes, so you name and address if you need.
Go ahead, Jay.
Jay, can you hear us?
I unmuted the phone, too. Jay, can you chat if you have your, if you're on the phone as well?
Has there anyone else that's raising their hand?
No, Jay's the only one. And it's not coming through.
Is it not coming through because we have technical difficulties?
No.
It's not going through because he's not.
I can't unmute him.
You can type in your question under the chat.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
How about now?
Yeah.
Ah, thank God, okay. Okay, what did I do? Okay, the J. Toolin, 39 Timberline Drive, I'm speaking on behalf of the Human Relations Commission. I think I just got rid of my picture, but that's okay. So, we met on September 21st, we had a very full agenda. Joe Capitafaro and I kind of talked before this meeting, and we decided that I was going to address a couple of things in public comment, and then he's going to address a couple of items in the commission update. The things I want, what I want to talk about is, one of the topics of conversation we've had right along over the last several months is the upsurge in antisemitism and finding a way to address that. And in August, when the Voices of Hope, right here in Farmington, had a meeting with Holocaust survivors hatched with swastikas and very inappropriate antisemitic language, I decided to reach out to a couple of organizations, the Anti-Defamation League, the Jewish Federation of Greater Hartford, and Voices of Hope, just to find out what kind of programs they had. And I guess I should be a little embarrassed to admit that I did not realize that, or I now do realize that they offer more than just programs having to do with hate and bigotry, just antisemitism. And I'm going to talk about a couple of things that we considered at our meeting in September 1st. The first one is a program called Walk Against Hate. It's going on right now. We, I guess I didn't have a lot of information about exactly what it is, other than that it's the first time it's been in Connecticut, it's something that's been running for several years, and obviously, because of the situation, it's a virtual walk. I am mentioning this even though the commission had some hesitation and did not vote to support it, but I think it's important to point out that this is, you know, a very good program that I will not forget about and hopefully bring it forward to the commission again. I did reach out to the Anti-Defamation League in an effort to try to get more information for the future for the commission, and invited a representative from the Anti-Defamation League to address us with more information about exactly what they do and what programs they offer in our next meeting. Sorry about this, Joe, I asked you to say this, but I'm going to say our next meeting is November 16th. The other thing I did, and this was not under the cover of the Human Relations Commission, but one of the things I did discover is a lot of communities are including their students. So I sent some information to Ellen Sayuda, who then forwarded it to Chris Loomis, to possibly have the students consider participating. I did not do this as Human Relations Commission, I just did it because I thought it might be an interesting program for the kids to participate in. I'm not sure if they are or not, but I just wanted to, I also realized that it's not our purview to be, you know, suggesting anything curriculum related or anything like that at all, but I thought it was an interesting program. Apparently Ellen did too, and Chris did too. So that's the first thing. The second thing, the program that I wanted to talk to is something called International Human Rights Day, which was initially adopted by the United Nations in 1948, it's been going, it began in 1950, it's been going on for 70 years. And we did vote to do some kind of program, and I guess what we're going to end up doing is a presentation, and you guys will find out about this. But the plan is for us to do a presentation before you, at the December 8th meeting, International Human Rights Day is December 10th, so it's convenient. And I will tell you, we haven't ironed out everything, but I will tell you that our platform is going to be honoring the women that had an integral part in developing Human Rights Day and the International Declaration of Human Rights, one of which was Eleanor Roosevelt. So I guess that gives it some credibility. And that's really basically, you know, we do have a plan for Human Rights Day, if there will be a presentation, like I said, and are very excited, and hopefully, at some point in time in the future, this will end up being what I envisioned, which would maybe be some kind of town-wide event. The other thing I wanted to say was some things that we're working on, because I have formed, you know, a relationship with the Anti-Defamation League and the Jewish Federation. It turns out, I know some people, just from being from West Hartford, that are involved in both those organizations, and they have some other things that I'm hoping to bring to the commission to consider. Concert Against Hate on December 6th. We're working on possibly offering a series of workshops on all the isms, not just antisemitism or racism or what have you. I think that might be of some value. Also, tomorrow night, the Jewish Federation is sponsoring a candidate forum of the 5th District, candidates including Johanna Hayes, I was just on the call with her at Farmington Hears, and there was some discussion about what occurred last night, but, which was horrible. But at any rate, that is being sponsored. And also, on November 10th, the Jewish Federation is sponsoring a webinar entitled Talking to Your Kids About Hate. Those were the two things I wanted to talk about from that. I also will say, back around a year or so ago, before everything went kifluie with the pandemic, we had made a commitment to put together a needs assessment. Nancy Parent developed a template for a needs assessment that we will be discussing and hopefully adopting at our next meeting in November. And very excited to do that, to kind of get an idea of what people know about the Human Relations Commission, and possibly get a handle from this needs assessment and the types of things that they feel we should be doing, what we shouldn't be doing, what's important to the community. And I think that will be a great thing for us. Obviously, one of my missions for this commission, and I believe this goes for all seven of us, is to be more visible in the Farmington community. So that's my, that's my statement on behalf of the Human Relations Commission. I also just want to take the opportunity to make a brief, separate statement as a member of Comprehensive FHS, I'm an original member of Comprehensive FHS. As many of you know, I've been part of that process from the very beginning. Just want to encourage you to hopefully be able to, I understand why it's on pause, I just want to make a general statement, you know, hoping, hoping that at some point soon, you'll be moving that out of pause and moving this forward, maybe after there's a presentation, I think, coming up sometime in the future, and get this thing to referendum, it's much needed, as you all know. And I appreciate all your time.
Thank you, Jay. Paula, Brad, we have some more comments that people sent in.
Yes. This is from Ed Owens, 11 Mulberry Lane. Dear members of Farmington Town Council, it's time to get the project started again. My wife and I have seen our two children and three grandchildren attend Farmington School and graduate from Farmington High. We watch the FHS plant age and deteriorate. The time is now to replace it and build for the future. This is from Scott Listor, 8 Candlewood Lane. Good morning. I'm ready to have the new high school building committee continue. I feel we are in desperate need for a new building, and that we need to continue the process. Brian Henderson, 165 Main Street. Dear Town Council members, as a Main Street Farmington resident for over 10 years and father of two boys under five, I am extremely grateful for the Town Council and Town Manager in providing leadership and direction to improve the quality of life in the Farmington Village, as the town works to implement the Town Council-approved BSC plan. There is no doubt that the saving and evolved parts of the previously approved plan over time will work to realize residents' vision for improved pedestrian and traffic safety as those areas are documented priority areas for improvement from the Town Commission Community Survey. Again, thank you for working together to improve and enhance pedestrian and traffic safety in the historic Farmington Village.
Is that all, Paul?
That's it.
Any other, Kevin, with your hand up?
I don't see any other hands.
Okay. With that, we will be ending public comments, we'll move on to item G.
Peter Mascher, this is, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 5th, 2020 regular Town Council meeting.
Joe Capitafaro, second. You have a motion, a second, any comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item H, communication of the certain fields.
You have two correspondence in your packet. The first one was from me to the state legislators regarding prevailing wage, just to let you know that the legislators did not take up this bill. And the second one was from a resident, and it had to do with sign regulation, and I did respond to him, and I did pass on his request to the TPZ, who does regularly press on.
Mr. Thomas? Item I, report to the committee. UConn Health Committee, you know your reports. To land acquisition.
Nothing due to report.
For your Green Affairs Committee.
This is Chris Fagan, the Green Affairs Committee, after a, I guess pandemic brought upon hiatus, will be meeting on Thursday, so next we have more reports.
Item four, Farmington High School Building Committee.
Again, Chris Fagan, as noted, and as we understand, there's presently a pause on the project, and so no update other than there will be, again, some more, we continue to meet on a monthly basis.
Item five, racial equality task force. And with this, we have joining us Nancy Parent, who will be giving us an update.
Thank you. Just to give a little history from our quarterly report about our task force, on June 9th, a working group was created right here at the council, and the working group was designed to develop the charge as well as recommend members to the task force. On July 14th, the task force members and the charge was approved. We were asked to examine and create a plan to develop strategies to address racial inequalities. And part of our charge was to present back here tonight, our timeline and action plan, and we will be presenting that in November. So far, we've had five meetings as of last week, and we're hearing from all different facets to come up with our timeline and action plan. And we've heard from everyone except for Board of Eds, which will be next week.
Nancy, may you just give a brief on who you, who you've met with?
Sure. So so far, we have met with the police, the health director, and then the town side, which was last week. And we, they have asked to meet with the legislators as well, that that will be arranged, but won't be part of the action plan.
And after each meeting, you guys are like kind of growing your metrics.
Absolutely. It's a working document that, you know, we'll have a plan, we'll be able to say some of the goals that we'd like to reach and what we'd like to recommend.
You know, you've been working hard, the committee's been working hard.
Great for the people.
It is, thank you Nancy, you've done a great job, basically running the committee in the interim, it's always good for leadership. Our original intent was at this meeting to have a full report from the committee, but because they haven't met with all of the town organizations yet, they're waiting until that time happens, so we're hoping in November to have a report from the newly elected chair.
Thank you.
Anything to add from our members of the, questions for Nancy? Excellent, all, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving on to the Village Center Parks and Properties, that off committee. We'll be looking at that.
Um, Paul, Peter, or Brian, or I?
I think.
So our group has been meeting quite a bit, and in your packet, you can see that we're having a meeting this Saturday, October 17th, from 10:11, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 o'clock at St. Patrick's Parking Lot. And if any member of the public is interested in our Main Street sidewalk replacement project, please call our office to RSVP, because we are, because of our new COVID rules, we're asking for an RSVP. But this is, the committee has come together, and they're now going to be going to the members of the public and to the Main Street residents, and the project scope is the west side of the sidewalk will be replaced from Route 4 to Highland Park Market. On the east side, the sidewalk will be replaced from Route 4 to the main gate subdivision, which includes a segment of new sidewalk, and construction is tentatively scheduled to begin in the spring and summer of 2021. The other thing I just wanted to mention, because we are proud of it, is that, one of the questions is with the, that the town has received $1,850,000 in grants, and the Town Council has allocated an additional $150,000 for the project. Therefore, there's $2 million available for this replacement project. So we're moving along on it, our committee, I think, met five or six times, and we walked the site, we've come up, we had our flyer that went to all the residents, a question and answer, and people are RSVPing, and St. Patrick's Church and the Montsenor were very kind to let us have their meeting in the parking lot outside.
Brian, excuse me, Gavin?
This is Brian Connolly. Just two things. One, I didn't see this meeting on the calendar on the Farmington website. Could you just double check that it's there, because I want to make sure the public knows about it, so they can attend?
Okay, it is on the front page, but on the front page, but it may not be on the calendar, let me check that.
Just one other thing, is there's a possibility of rain? Do we have a rain line, just in case?
DJ, I'll turn that over to you.
We're part of New Englanders. Short of lightning and thunder, if it's, if it's a mist or light rain, I think we'll continue. We'll do what we can to continue, and also we're not stretching out too far, but if it becomes a bad weather, that I think.
I'm all for that, I just want me to make sure that people have.
No, to show up.
Very good question.
If you're doing the rain gear.
One of the things, Brian, because we're doing the RSVP, we have everyone's email, and we're letting them know that if we have to cancel, we'll send them out an email, but we are telling people that we were probably trying to have a meeting.
We will be there.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay. Moving on. Do the chair report?
First thing, foremost on everyone's mind this year is the election, the town clerk has been in the process of receiving many more absentee ballots than ever have come in. I believe we're somewhere around 7,000 now. So, you know, we're having them come in a number of ways, some are coming in through the mail, there is a drop box in front of Town Hall, they empty the drop box two to three times a day, so you can bring in that way as well. The registrar, for all of you who went to the primaries, they did a great job of preparing the voting site, so you'd be as safe as possible, they cleaned surfaces after each person voted, they kept people socially distant, six feet away from each other, they had great staff helping them with all that, the registrars wanted me to reiterate again what a great job all the people helping them with the election work. They've taken everything they learned from the primaries and tried to see if there are any tweaks or improvements they can make, so everyone feels safe voting in person, or again, if they prefer via absentee. So whichever way you're voting, the most important thing to bring with you when you vote is your patience. So whichever way you're voting, the most important thing to bring with you when you vote is your patience. Everyone is going through a new process here. So please, and I'm patient and, so please be patient. We're all kind of, this is all new territory. So everything they're doing, they're trying it a different way. So also, as mentioned, we're going to have our meeting on the 17th at St. Patrick's Church at 10:00 AM for the sidewalk project. Hopefully shine, not rain. Also, I wanted to mention, there are a large number of car break-ins that have been happening. And when I say break-ins, mostly it's unlocked cars. So the best thing you can do is lock your car. So just keep an eye on that. Also, anyone who's on any type of social media, you can see it's a buzz with bear pictures. The bears are busily fattening up for the winter. They're looking for anything they can eat. They are all over the place right now. Try and keep your bird feeders away from them. Any loose food that might be accessible to them, out of the way. And at the risk of stating the obvious, avoid bears. It's not a good selfie opportunity. Also, one last thing, bulk waste pickup, October 19th to 23rd. You can visit the town website for any other details on what you can and cannot put out at bulky waste. With that, I will turn it over to the Board of Education.
Chris Fagan. Last meeting, September 21st, started with a few recognitions. Chris Loomis was awarded Teacher of the Year. And he is the first counselor that's ever received that award. Evan Foreman received the Staff Member of the Year. He's the director of audiovisual team up at high school. And actually made me look very good in a couple of messages that went up on the Board of Education website over the years. And then last was a recognition for Tim Harris, who is retiring. And as Chair of the Board of Ed and a member of the Board of Ed for years, I'd like to just congratulate him, wish him well in retirement, and thank him for his countless, you know, dedication and efforts over the years to keep our schools absolutely in fantastic shape, sometimes with shoestring budgets. And Tim's entire crew, I mean, we couldn't have been more fortunate over the years to have someone like Tim Harris working for us at Board of Ed level in terms of maintaining our schools and providing our facilities to stay top-notch shape for our students and families. So congratulations to him and personally, thank you very much. Kathy provided an update on remote learning. Just for everybody's information, in terms of the in-learn, remote learning versus in-person percentages, we're about 24% or 976 students who are remote learning. 76% of just over 3,000 are in-person learning. We're in the process right now in October of the sort of stage in-school transition, and that's underway. The key here is everything is tentative and flexible with regard to how that's going. But even as of today, Superintendent Greer advised me that, I can use her quote as saying, so far, so good. So things are going well on the transition back to full in-person learning. Again, the Board of Ed stays on top of everything with maintaining COVID protocols. We place tracking with the Farmington Valley Health Department, Department of Public Health, and State Department of Education, Communications, Tracking, any new cases and communicating with the school families. And there's an opt-out option for families who are uncomfortable having their children return to in-person learning. The only caveat there is that they stay out until the end of the semester if they want to change their opinion they don't want. Families coming in and out, they complicate sort of the COVID protocols you have in place. There was an update as to summer maintenance and building repairs. You know, you can go check out the maintenance and see each school. But generally, you know, district-wide, it was sort of retrofitting bubblers to hands-only conditions. So we've eliminated contact there. Upgrades to air handling systems for improved ventilation and classroom furniture changes with regards to providing for social distance learning. Updates as to general standard-based curriculum work. Assistant Superintendent Kim Wynn announced a new committee, the Community Council for Equity and Inclusion, is being formed. Will involve stakeholder participation from each school to sort of understand unconscious bias in the schools and examine racial climate and cultures in the schools. So that's the new undertaking on behalf of the Board of Ed. Additional updates for the summer school programs and staffing updates. Staffing updates remain a challenge with regard to the pressures due to the pandemic. Alicia provided a budget update that still, you know, hasn't been crystallized yet. And Alicia's sense is that by next month with September budget, we'll have a better update as to crystallize the sense of where things stand based upon challenges presented by COVID. And then some modest calendar changes, but also another important item, which is another item for us later. But the asset contract was approved. And that's it.
Okay, moving on to Economic Development.
Yes, Edward Gennaros. The EDC hosted their Fall Business Breakfast on September 22nd. The keynote speaker was Mr. John Traynor, Executive Vice President and Chief Investment Officer at People's United Bank. Mr. Traynor shared his thoughts and insights on the connected economy in 2020 and beyond. Some people were able to attend in person. It was limited attendance in person, and many others attended via Zoom. And the next meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Wednesday, October 14th, at 5:30 PM.
The Farmington Historic District Commission.
The Historic District Commission met September 21st. There were a couple of items on the agenda, which were an expansion at the 17 Thompson Street, which they took under consideration. And other business was an application for a sign frame for the first church temporary sign. Some discussion of sidewalks. There was also some discussion of what we're planning to hold a public hearing with the district on a study report, which is with the state for review right now for approval. And that's it. Our next meeting is going to be on November 20th at 4:00.
How is it reported? Oh, I'm sorry. No report for how it's reported. June relation?
Yes, Joe Capitofaro. Just a couple of things. HRC is trying to work with the residents of Westerly. They're having some issues with the crosswalks. So they're working with the traffic review board and they try to remedy those issues. And the HRC is also looking to develop a close working relationship with the Board of Ed in the future.
Library Board, no report. Town plan is owning the area.
Yes, Joe Capitofaro. As one thing, Metro Realty Group requested a tax amendment for a change to more regulations for a minimum separation between buildings from 50 feet to 30 feet. It was voted on and approved by the commission.
Thank you.
Unionville Historic. Edward Gennaros. The Unionville Historic District and Properties Commission Study Committee submitted their preliminary study report. The preliminary report recommends four properties for the inclusion in Unionville's historic districts. And we're going to receive a final report towards the end of the year. And Kathy included in our agenda packet pictures of those four properties.
Unionville Village Improvement Association.
Edward Gennaros, nothing to report.
WCCN.
Joe Capitofaro. While one thing, the Madison Park pump station is about complete and they're hoping to get everything for running by next week.
Great. Are there any other boards or meetings on that? We'll move on to the all-important reports to Town Manager.
We have the weekly report in front of you. The quarterly report's quite lengthy, but I thought I could maybe summarize what a lot of our time has been spent over the last quarter. The first item would be the storm, as you remember, we did lose power here in Farmington. So that was a significant event. The second item that my staff and I have been spending quite a bit of time on is what we talked about earlier, is about Parks and Ahioc Committee and our sidewalk meeting. So that, as discussed earlier, we have a group meeting this Saturday. The next item that, as Nancy Parent mentioned, that I did present to the racial equality task force, myself, Rose Ponte, went to the meeting last week. And so we, I thought that went well. The next item is the elections. Erica and Steve Hoffman have been spending quite a bit of time with the registrar and the town clerk working on our reelections. And lastly, just to mention that COVID, that that is still taking quite a bit of our time. We, as everyone has known, seen, there has been a little bit of an uptick. What is happening with us, with our employment issues, is that luckily, we have not had too many people that have COVID. But we have had some employees that have had close contacts with people with COVID. And based on the quarantine rules, they've been out. So tracking that down and helping our health district in doing that. So COVID is taking quite a bit of time, which we've been spending over the quarter. I do want to give a shout out to our health district, Jennifer, our health director. They've really been working around the clock. They've been helping the school systems in our region and helping us with our employees. And they're a small operation, and they really, since March, have not taken a break. So I think it's, you know, everyone should know that. And Jennifer, we're lucky to have her. She's been really very responsive to us anytime, any, you know, Sunday afternoons, Friday nights, whenever it happens. I'm trying to be reassuring to our employees, doing our contact tracing. So that's, I just wanted to kind of summarize what I've been spending my time with over the last quarter. The Unionville Historic District Commission report, Edward, you mentioned that. And it's in my report with some pictures. Bond sale, we did very well with our bond sale. And we would did continue to have our AAA credit rating. I'm going to turn it over to Joe in a moment, and he's going to just give us a financial update on both our deferment program and also our revenues. We, on September 30th, Chief Paul Lansing was awarded the Distinguished Chief Award. So that was a really great award for him, and it was for their career body of work and dedication to the profession. So the town of Farmington is fortunate to have Chief Lansing leading our police department. And this was phenomenal. That was really well deserved. Edward, you had asked me about an AARP grant. It's a small grant of $4,000. We are going to be applying for that grant. And part of our goal is on Town Manager Goal 15, is our trails enhancement project. And this was like a great goal to, you have to, it's a quick action goal. We are, you have to spend the money, apply quickly, and spend it quickly. And so the maximum grant is $4,000. And our project is to seek enhancement of Farmington Trails providing economic weight by your signage and mile markers. So that's the grant that we need to apply for.
That's great.
On just a quick overview on the legislative special session provided by CCM. So you can see the ballots, I'm not ballots, I'm on elections. You can see the different bills. And they, they work busy. And I think they're pretty self-explanatory. And I think that's it. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple of comments. First of all, this has been an incredibly unusual quarter and year. So as Kathy was mentioning, we had a storm. We've got elections that will be done in a very unusual manner. And while all this is going on, we've got COVID. And I'll reiterate what she said. The health district has been tremendous. This is an organization that is generally working quietly behind the scenes. And they are basically staffed to do that. So in something like an international pandemic hit, they are going full out, nonstop for the duration. So they've truly done yeoman's duty. Also, the Distinguished Chief's Award. You know, great to see our chief, Paul Lansing, recognized. We know what a good job he does here in town, but it's great to see that also witnessed outside of our area. And the ARB grant, you know, had brought this up. We had gotten one, I think, a couple of years ago. It's money being offered up. It's great to be taking advantage of it, so.
Yeah, Joe, if you want to give your update?
I'll try to do this with the mask on. If you don't understand, I'll take it off. Basically, I was asked to report on two things. First is what the results of the deferment were. And we actually received 155 deferment applications this year. The total dollar value of the deferments was $658,515.48. Broken down, that was $583,000 for taxes, $22,000, almost $23,000 for waste collection, for waste fees, and $52,000 for sewer use fees. They were also included as part of the deferment. So 155 deferments approved, $658,000 deferred. As of October 1st, we have 40 delinquents. So of the 155, majority did obviously pay. Forty are still delinquent. Dollar-wise, it's 53, almost $54,000 in taxes is delinquent, $5,000 in waste fees, and about $9,500 in sewer use fees. So overall, the deferment did not have a significant impact, much to my surprise actually, on the town's taxes. And for July, it actually worked out fairly well. Notices have gone out, the 40 delinquents, and hopefully we'll be collecting those in the next 60 days or so. And of course, as of October 1st, being delinquent, they do now have to pay interest on those, on the delinquencies. The other thing I was asked to report on, if anybody, is it okay to pass these out? You showed the essential state document. What you have in front of you is a report, revenue report for our operating budget as of September 30th, 2020. It's asked to provide you with this report, giving indication of where we stand with revenue for the general front, the operating budget as of the end of the first quarter. What you have is shows basically what you've adopted in your budget on May 12th of this half of 2020. The revised budget should be the same as the adopted budget. And the third column shows you the year-to-date, what we've collected so far this year. Fourth column shows you what's uncollected, and then the percent collected. Just going briefly by category, the first category is property taxes, our largest revenue source. And revenues did come in well. Taxes did come in well beginning July. We are about $5,000 ahead of where we were last year at the same time. So there was no negative impact because of the pandemic or the economic situation. Leasing taxes are doing okay, pretty much where we would be at this time of year. Interest and lease fees are actually up a little bit. And the last one is, I want to point out, the supplemental motor vehicle taxes. We budget this, this is taxes when you buy a car, certain point in time in the year, you get a supplemental motor vehicle tax. It usually comes out in December. You have to pay in January. Just a word question on this one. We received notice late on Friday afternoon that the state indicated that the number of registered cars, new vehicles during that time period is down 20%. And so the Assessors Association feels that that's going to translate down to the individual towns. So we're looking at the possibility that that number of 150,000 will be 20% less, which is roughly $170,000. Again, we won't know that until December when we get the actual files from the Department of Motor Vehicles and we price them out in established bills. But that's one of our red flag areas. Under licenses and permits, overall, we had a very good July for building permits. We had one large permit, a $12 million renovation project, which pretty much skewed our building permit revenue, increased it dramatically. So our building permits are way ahead at this point because of that one application. Boggs and September were pretty much on target. Actually, Boggs is slightly below target. But again, because we had that large building permit in July, it really helped out the revenues of the license and permit revenues. Of court fines and fees, it's swirling in the year. Most of that money comes in later in the year. So there's, right now, it's, not much has been collected. We don't, we don't see much activity. Interest investment income, if you recall during the budget process at the end, and we were all doing this Zoom thing, I asked the council to reduce this originally when you did your proposed budget. We were up around $650,000 that we were projecting. Asked you to bring it down to $250,000, and you did so. And I unfortunately have to tell you that probably should have gone further because the rates are very low right now. It's basically, we're talking two tenths of a percent. Despite the fact we have plenty of money to invest, there's just no return out there. Actually, the projection right now is that we'll be lucky if we hit $125,000 in revenue. So we're looking at a true potential shortfall. And again, unless no rates dramatically increase over the next nine months, we're looking at a potential $125,000 shortfall in that account. Grants and pilots, basically, most of them have, very few have come in at this point in the first quarter. One big one from the state is Palmyra Rose who did receive our one-half share, which is, which came in August. There are some minor grants that came in that are actually promising in this category. Just want to point two of them out. One is the police grants. We normally get about a $75,000 grant for having a regional dispatch. The state readjusted the formula this year and we're actually going to receive somewhere in the neighborhood, probably around $137,000 instead of the $75,000 for having that regional dispatch. So that's a positive grant. As you can see before, we received $85,000 from that grant. We hope to see, see that, you know, not quite done by the end of the year. And the other one I would like to point out is a new grant. And I'll be coming back to you probably in December or January, once the election is over. But we've been receiving grant money from the state of Connecticut for the various elections, the primaries, for the election coming up. Eric isn't very diligent about monitoring this and making sure this money comes in. What I'm going to propose to you is at some point later on after the election overs, that we actually increase your budget so that we could offset this revenue coming in with what the expenditures are. And I'll give you the motion to do that. We've done it in the past for other grants. It's not something new, but it's something I think is going to be warranted, we're going to need to do. The only other grant I would point out here is we did get word late in August that the equalized cost sharing grant will have some adjustments to it. And I'm not sure, because of special ed costs, I'm not sure what that is at this point. But that is another grant that we're monitoring because we, we pretty much know we're not going to get the full amount that we budgeted. The charges and fees, both, that, that is also doing very well. Two in particular are two that relate to the town clerk, real estate conveyance tax. And the town clerk fees are well above where they would normally be at this time. They're doing very well. Though, that's the offset to low rates, you do a lot of financing, a lot of transactions. So we're seeing a lot of, I've taken recording fees and also in the real estate conveyance tax. Very positive with those two accounts. Most of the other accounts are coming in pretty much on budget, other than that. And then finally, the other one I would point out is under other revenue, there's an account called other assessments. $450,000 was budgeted. This is the money that we are supposed to get from the towns that participate in our sewer treatment plant. We did build them, we're going to see what happens. We haven't had any response to that many towns yet. I'm not sure where this one's going at this point, but hopefully we will get the entire $450,000 from the towns on that one. So it's a little bit, a little bit up in the air, but I think, I think we'll get close to the 450 on that one. And then finally, Westwood's contribution, although you see zeros there, we're, the golf courses, all golf courses had a tremendous year this year. The pandemic, you know, busts all records at golf courses. And we think that we actually may exceed on the Westwood's contribution. Their contribution may come in higher than it has, within we have budgeted. Overall, right now, based on all the pluses and minuses, our projection is we're probably in the $100,000 to $150,000 over budget range. In other words, if everything holds true at this point, our revenue should exceed our budget amounts by about $150,000. My only caveat with that is that I told you in February that the last year budget was sort of, a million dollars more in revenue, and it ended up with $40,000 in revenue. So obviously, you know, there's a lot of things that happened that are beyond our control, the pandemics, whatever, you know, the economic meltdown. So provided nothing occurs going forward, and we don't get another pandemic, another shutdown, another economic meltdown, we have a potential for about 100, between $100,000 and $150,000 excess of revenue at this point.
PJ, I could just maybe add, one of the things that, of course, Joe and I have been talking about and the revenues, you know, are stable right now, which we're very happy about. We have some milestones coming up. One of them being, you know, we want to make sure we get our state funding, those grants, you know, that's a big amount of money. But the other thing, just to know on the expenditure side, is that we are spending money. We always spend money, but we are spending money because of some things that are related to COVID, things that are related to the election. We've had overtimes on the trails and things of that nature, which again, went to the COVID, you know, making sure our trails were safe, our riverfront was safe. So, and then lastly, that snow, we haven't gotten to snow yet. So again, we, you know, usually if we have a cushion on the revenue side, that cushion, we're a little bit, not as much, and we are spending money more so unexpected expenses on the expenditure side. So again, stable, I think we're in good shape, but I think, you know, just to piggyback on a whole picture of it.
We're still in the process of doing our expenditure projection at this point. So I don't have anything to really report at this point. But I will provide you with the report once I do have the projections. The problem is just the lag in paying some of the bills because, you know, most of your bills for September get paid in October. So the projection doesn't really come out until the end of October, beginning in November. But we are, just an indication as Kathy said, we, preliminary indications are we are running higher than on the expenditure side. And also, even though the bond sale was a very good sale and we did, you know, we think we got a very good rate, last year, so we have a cushion in that account. We're not going to have a cushion this year. We've cut that back in order to achieve the zero tax increase this year. So we took away any cushion that we have in that account. So you're not going to see any surplus money, you probably don't see any surplus money in the debt service this year.
Hi, Joe. Just one question backing up on the other assessments of $450,000 for the sewer treatment plant. Are those fees from the towns that are using our facility?
Yes, what, what happens is each town has its individual contract with the town, with the town of Farmington, and which stresses how they're supposed to pay for any upgrades to the treatment plant. So what we did is actually, we kind of outlined it in quarterly reports with the manager. What we did is once we closed the project, let's back up. We, we did the final financings for this project. We did two clean water fund loans totaling almost $13 million in July. Once we had those done, we were able to do the final closeout on the financials and figure out what our costs were. And then we, and what our debt payments are going out over the next 20 years. And then we allocated that based on the percentage of flow from each town. So over versus the flow for the entire sewer plant. So every town was assigned a percentage of the cost of the upgrade. And they were billed, and what happens is they will be billed once a year over the next 20 years to help pay back the clean water, the three clean water fund homes that are out there.
So they, this was all pre-done, they know these bills are coming. You just don't know what the receivable.
Yeah, well, there's always, everybody was put on notice, all the towns, and this also includes UConn Health Center, were put on notice back in, I believe it was 2013, and also again, 2016, telling them that this was out there, that this was happening and prepared to pay for it, that they would have to pay for it at some point. But there's always, you know, the possibility that people will contest their percentage of flow or they may contest the costs that are included in there. It never enough. I mean, you're, you're basically handing towns, you know, large bills. And in a tight economy, you know, the last time we did this was 1993 and it went until 2013. And there wasn't any problems. There were some, there were some back and forth at the beginning. I was in June of 93, but based on the files that I saw, there was some correspondence indicating there was some back and forth between some of the towns questioning the cost, questioning the allocations. And there were some adjustments that took place at that time. So it may happen again this time around.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Just a quick question, Joe, just because I'm curious. Were there any cost savings that we realized due to COVID over the last few months? Any at all?
No, actually, we're, we're actually, you know, we, we didn't incur a lot of money because of COVID. We have a lot of expended, we did a lot of purchases, small purchases. You know, you buy a, you buy a case of wipes or you buy, you know, you buy these partitions and stuff. We submitted our FEMA bill, we're supposed to get reimbursed 75% from FEMA. We submitted our bill. FEMA basically said, you know, we don't likely submit it, do it again, which we're in the process of doing again for them. But I've been talking to other towns who have gotten past where we are in this process. And we're noticing that FEMA is throwing a lot of things out, they're not reimbursing for a lot of things. The next step is to go to the state. The state does have CARES money to help reimburse this lawsuit. And there's some question as to whether the state's going to file FEMA, you know, for, in terms of a lot of expenditures or not. But, you know, as of, as of, I think it was July, we, and then even further complicated, fire department expenses are even separate, they're not part of FEMA, they're part of the fire administration. So you don't even, you don't bill for those. So our, our total expenses, non-personal expenses as of the end of July were about $30,000, $32,000. And since then, we've probably added another maybe $8,000 or $9,000 to that, which we're going to, again, try to get reimbursement for. And we've also been noticed that as of September 15th, FEMA is not reimbursing for any more COVID-19 expenses. So anything after September 15th, you're on your own. But again, we haven't really incurred a lot of, you know, major, major expenses. If you compare what we've incurred from FEMA to what we incurred with the tropical storm, which I neglected to mention, you know, tropical storm is probably going to be, you know, 10 times what we incurred for pandemic expenses at this point.
Thank you for keeping on, Joe.
Your stuff.
Thanks for your report, Joe, very helpful. Looks like there's a couple areas of concern, but overall, we're looking pretty healthy on the revenue side. Did you say you were going to present in the future to us on the expenses, projected expenses as well?
Yes, we do, we do projections every quarter. And then initially, the first six months of the year, do two projections, one at the end of the first quarter, one at the end of the second quarter. Month of February, we start doing projections on a monthly basis. And what Kathy's asked is that, when you have the projections done for the first quarter, that I can share them with you, especially if there's any, any major concerns with them. Because this year is so tight and so crazy, because of what happened at the end of last year, what last year ended. Like I said, we, in February of last year, we were sitting on, you know, almost $2 million in surplus. And we ended up, you know, at the end of the year with a half million, less than a half million dollars because of the pandemic and the economic meltdown. So, so the short answer is yes, as soon as we have the expenditure side. And again, I'm only talking town, I'm on the Board of Education, that they do their own. So as we figure out where we are with the town as, again, the first quarter, I probably shouldn't have Kathy. And, you know, if she likes, she probably would share it with you guys.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of what I was going to get at was the Board of Education side and kind of getting a pulse as to how COVID is impacting their expenses. I know that's not you, but is it possible that we could get some sort of report from the?
You could ask PJ to have request a report for the school system.
As I said in my report, I think that at least you will have a more crystallized version of that next month.
Next month.
Clarity coming up in the next, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah. It's that similar to what you were saying.
Any other questions, Joe?
Just one comment, a question. As, as Joe mentioned, the receipts and revenues are looking somewhat positive. The expenses are still, there are a few, a few areas concerned. Just, actually, I do have one question, Joe. The, the offset you were talking about from the interest earnings versus the conveyance taxes, so we find that, how close are those offsets? I'm sure that's due a lot with interest rates and whatnot, but are they fairly close? Or do we generally see as positive or negative?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand the question.
The, the, our interest earnings, as that goes down substantially, I thought you were saying because interest is going down, we're bringing in more conveyance taxes?
Yeah, there's, well, I guess the point is, you know, interest rates are really low for investment purposes, so we're not getting anything. And it's kind of like when you talk about the debt, I mean, the borrowing, because interest rates are so low, you're not getting on the investment side. The positive side of that is the interest rates are so low that borrowing is good. So people are more, are actually being more aggressive in buying houses and selling houses and things of that nature. So because of that, you're seeing more activity and you're seeing, you're seeing more revenue in the town clerk accounts, land transaction accounts. I don't think it's a one-for-one type thing. It's, you know, part of loss always is people's comfort level in the economy. But, you know, I, I know that, that just, I mean, you, maybe you probably, maybe some of you have also done it, but I took out a mortgage last year and I've gotten probably 10 phone calls in the past, you know, two weeks saying, hey, refinance this, you know, you can refinance this and save, and save money. The rates are just down that much ridiculous, you know, that much lower. And that's, my friend is an attorney who does title searches. He's making more money in the past six months than he's made in the past 10 years.
Anything else, Ken?
No, that is it.
Okay, that's all through the town manager reports.
Agenda item.
Motion to, you have a motion to accept the town manager's report.
Oh, please, I'm waiting. I make a motion to accept the town manager's report. Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered. Appointment?
Agenda item L3, and my apologies for any pronunciation, that Hoon Wa be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2022. Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
The motion is second, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered.
Agenda item L4, my apologies again for any pronunciations, that Hoon Neet Rama Shandani be appointed to the Economic Development Commission for the balance of a two-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2022. Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
The motion is second, any discussion? Here is none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered.
Agenda item L7, I make a motion that Jim Foote be appointed to the Water Pollution Control Authority for the balance of a five-year term beginning immediately and ending September 30th, 2025. Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
The motion is second, any discussion? We're none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered. Just a note on the appointments, we have two people appointed who are new appointments and also new to being involved in town. So it's nice to see new names added to, the name of Jim Foote is, I hear, 25 years old. So it gets very powerful in there. Moving on to item M, old business. Being done. Item N, new business.
Agenda item N1, I make a motion to amend chapter 51, pensions of the town of Farmington code. Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
The motion is second, Kathy?
As you can see on the motion, just from very, Erica went through it in the public hearing, but we're just adding the goal of nursing and then it's effective July 1st, 2020.
Okay, we have a motion is second, any questions, discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered. And two? Item two.
Agenda item N2, I make a motion to approve or reject or take no action on the proposed contract between the Farmington Administrators and Supervisors Association, FASSA, and the Board of Education.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second. The motion is second.
I think, I think Peter, if you know which way you want to go, I think it's easier just to, just do that, or, you know, okay.
To approve the proposed contract between the Farmington Administrators and Supervisors Association, FASSA, and the Board of Education.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second. The motion is passed, Kathy, one.
This is the agreement that was filed with the town clerk on September 29th, 2020. As you can see, that the FASSA FASS is from 2021 to 2024, the term is, that, again, 2021 to 2024, and there are the salary changes, 1.5% DW and step movement, 1.75 DW and step movement, 2% DW and step improvement, and they did make changes in their insurance, 24% to 24.5, to 25.5% for the employee contribution. And this is for the Farmington Administrators and Supervisors Association, the FASSA, which, correct me, which I haven't been involved in it, but my understanding is the principal, it's the principal.
Correct, there is, yeah. Okay, we have a motion in second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered.
Agenda item N3, to amend the lease agreement between the town of Farmington and the American Tower Corporation for the tower site located at 199 Town Farm Road, per the attached.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
As you can see, we're looking to amend the lease, we are not actually looking, they're looking to amend the lease. Joe has worked with them, and I think that this is a reasonable amendment, it still keeps our revenue coming in. We do get a signing bonus, which I thought was a great idea, if Joe would have done that. And again, if you can see, if you actually look back at the piece that Joe has given us, one of the items of revenue with our cell tower, unfortunately, these companies have been coming through and asking to renegotiate, the market isn't as great as it once was. But I do like to mention, when we do talk about this, that Farmington, way back when we started this, our position was to put these cell towers on our own town property to collect the revenue, and we've done that for 15 years or so. But that market is changing a little bit, and so we are renegotiating some of these leases. But I think, as you can see in our revenue, I think it's about $150,000 a year, town space rentals that we've been receiving, so I would recommend approving them.
Motion is second, any discussion? Just to reiterate what Kathy mentioned, basically, this is money that we have been collecting for a number of years at no cost to us. Because things have changed, the company has been seeking to renegotiate, but that doesn't cost us anything to renegotiate, so it seems like possible. No discussion, I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Hearing none, the motion passed.
Agenda item N4, to approve the attached certified resolutions for the September 8th, 2020 town council meeting.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second.
We approved this at the last meeting, but we had made an error on it, so we have to approve it again, and this is, again, my understanding, Kathy, this is to collect our grant money for the affordable housing grant?
These are two grants, one is the affordable housing grant, the second is one of those grants for the sidewalk project on Main Street.
Okay, the motion is second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered.
Agenda item N5, the motion to cancel the October 27th, 2020 town council meeting.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second. We have a motion in second, I'm sure there's going to be hot and displayed in the mirror. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered.
Agenda item N6, I make a motion to approve the following property tax refunds as listed below in front of you.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second. The motion is second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? Close, passed and answered. Executive session, we have none. Before we move on to item T, I would like to leave you with a quote this evening from the late Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, "You can disagree without being as agreed." Without, I, bringing the T.
Make a motion that we adjourn the October 13th, 2020 town council meeting.
Joe, Captain Farrell, second. We have a motion in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion passed and answered. You are adjourned.